Thanks. Great. Morning, everybody. I'll call this meeting of the Advisory Planning Commission on Monday, August 26th, 2014, 9:00 AM. It's an order and acknowledge that we're on the traditional territory of Stellus. First item of business is going to be selection of a chair. I don't know if we want to maybe do a quick introduction first. I think the only new member here today is Ron. I don't know if you know everybody, but...
I know Alan. I know Ken. I know you. And I recognize two faces in the audience.
Your name is?
Ron. Ron Logan. Yeah, I've been a resident here for six years. Retired, okay. Yeah, spent 50 years in constructions.
You served your time.
I served my time, yeah.
I think we were going to have two members joining by Zoom, but they're not on Zoom as of yet. So we'll move on to selection of a chair. So the recommendation is that someone will be appointed as Chair of the Advisory Planning Commission.
Can I make a nomination?
Sure. I'll just let Alan go first here, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think continuity is very important. And with that in mind, one of the people on this table that has preceded this iteration is Andy. And I would nominate Andy.
That was who I was going to nominate for the same reason. So I am seconding it.
So you'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to that effect.
About Andy?
Strathott.
Strathott? He appointed as Chair of the Advisory Planning Commission? Seconded by Judy? Okay. I will call, or I guess any discussion on that? Okay, I will call the question on the motion. All in favor? Right?
I guess I don't...
With a pose?
No, I don't get to vote.
You can vote, yeah.
So pardon me if I, and please correct me if I slip on some technicalities. No ill intention.
No problem. So carried unanimously. Alright.
Can I sit here or do I move or...
You can feel free to move or sit wherever you like.
Okay, I'll sit here.
Sure.
Thanks, I'll sit there.
Great.
May I, just on point of personal privilege, it's better if you stay there because you know I don't have good hearing. And I haven't found a way electronically to pick everybody up. Memorial Hall is perfect with those microphone setups I can stream from there. But I, a lot of my hearing is lip reading. So it's better if you're there.
Okay.
Professor, just ask if you don't mind speaking just a little louder. It helps me and I know it's my problem, but you can sure help me with it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll be noted to talk loud anyway, so.
Same here. I get accused of leaving my outside voice on.
I've never had trouble hearing, Ken.
I work in a Wichom region, so my voice tends to be loud.
Industrial.
I get in trouble. I get in trouble, I guess.
I used to be a radio guy, gunny instructor in the cadets.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I did.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of.
Okay, so I guess on that note, was there any instructional bleeding items? Okay. Sorry.
We'll do approval of the agenda.
Okay.
So we'll need a mover and a seconder.
And so move.
Move for approval?
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. We'll do just discussion or call the question?
Errors or omissions?
Minutes would be...
Sorry, we're just on the agenda, yeah.
So there is, I mean, it's pretty simple, I think, so.
Okay, so move by Judy, seconded by Andy. Sorry, you got to call, ask those in favor.
Oh, all in favor? Sorry, all in favor? Good.
Okay. I'm moving on to adoption of the minutes and then the recommendation is there that the Advisory Planning Commission meeting minutes of December 7th, 2023, be adopted.
So...
So seconded.
Was there, did you guys see any problems? Because you guys were, you weren't here for that, so.
I'll play it again.
You'll play, okay. Were there any problems?
I didn't see any errors or omissions, but it does, the fact that this is now August?
Yeah.
I mean, the point has been made. We needed terms of reference and a better system of communicating with the council than having minutes adopted. And this isn't something that just happened with this newer one. There were only two meetings the previous year.
That's right.
And there were eight months because...
Quite often, it's been like seven weeks, right?
This is a plea for...
Yeah. I guess my issue is that this year would go to council at their next meeting after this meeting here, which would have been January. Or would this go to council now after the meeting, the minutes approved?
So the minutes kind of, they just serve as a document that records when the meeting was, who attended, and what was discussed. But your feedback, and Ken jump in if I'm wrong, but your feedback gets worked into the final report by the planning consultant. So this particular, this particular development was the GLenco that was discussed in December. And it's still working its way through the process of going back to council. This was just one piece, the APC. There were some other referrals that had to be placed.
Part of the APC process and yes, it's in the training session.
Okay, yeah, because that was a question you had last meeting here.
Yeah, there's, basically what it is, is we have the application. Then we have the referral and the data collection. And the referral or the data collection can take however long. Then once we get all of that information, which include, sorry, the referral also includes the public hearing. Then once we get all of that information collected from the referral process, this process, it goes to a final report. So council sees all of this and they say, yes, they have to say yes or no to each of these suggestions.
That we put on the minutes?
Yeah. They have to look at it and they decide whether or not they're going to ask for this study, that study, or they're going to take whatever verbatim that the APC has said. That's also the same thing with the public hearing process. It's also the same thing with the referral process. So we take all of that information. So instead of doing it on a piecemeal basis, we do it at the end of the process before final adoption of the bylaw. They may, council may look at all of this information and say, no, we're not interested in this. Or they'll say, yes, we are, but we need study X, Y, and Z, or whatever.
So my question is then, has council seen this? These minutes, sorry, has councils, have these minutes been presented to council?
I know. They need to get adopted first by the commission.
Okay, okay. So it's conceivable that...
No. Regardless of whether or not they get adopted or not, they go into the decision-making process. I do a summary of all of the comments that have been received that are land use applicable at the public hearing, referral stage, this stage. And then goes to the council, almost the chief of council. Because of who I was dealing with last week. Then they decide as to what they're going to do. So I don't need this to be verified by the council at a council table. I take it right now, even though it's draft, I take it and I still use it in the data collection and information collection that I use, that I share with councils before they make a decision.
I guess my point was that we hadn't seen it, as the APC hadn't seen it before went to council, before you used it in your, in your...
I'm sorry, see what?
The minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, this is, you guys were at the meeting, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can I ask a question? Has this been incorporated into the report?
Not yet, because the report's not going on the agenda until September 9th.
Okay, and then the second follow-up question is, do we see your summary of our meeting? We don't see it.
No. Not unless the council wants to send it back to you guys.
It will be in the, in the meeting agenda package for council.
Yep.
When it comes out.
Yep.
And then, so we see these meeting, these minutes, in this case, it's months after. Is there any way that we can see the meeting, the minutes earlier so that we can talk about corrections or anything? Because this is eight months later.
This is when your APC meetings happen. We can't just arbitrarily say we have to have a meeting to review the minutes. The meeting has to be set up by a referral from council.
And then we can't discuss this outside of this venue, right?
Discuss what?
The minutes and the business from here. We can't like email them?
You can discuss it whenever you want.
Okay.
There's just, whatever.
Okay.
It's not a secret by any stretch.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is making my point that I've tried to make all along. And I won't go into it. By the way, what we said in our minutes at the public meeting, I submitted my own personal copy in which I summarized what we had already decided. Whether that was proper or not, I felt it had to go forward. So that information did go to the public meeting. But the, we're, I think we were losing sight of what the minutes are. The minutes are a record of what we do. They belong to us. They don't even go to council, the minutes.
They do.
They do.
Well, maybe they, maybe they can go there, but I'm just saying that should not be the vehicle through which they learn what we said. That's why I wanted to say, and we're getting into what should be the, how we treat the minutes, but we should be making a report at the end of each meeting and that report goes directly to council. And whether we approve the minutes or not, that report. But anyway, I'm into discussion, that needs to come down the line. But the minutes, it's just really a record of what we do at this meeting and it's not a vehicle for transferring information. That's all.
Not understand that story, then when Ken does, he takes the medicine, he needs a report from that.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think that's appropriate, that's all.
That is, because that's how it works. Because you've been asked, we're getting into the meat and potatoes of what the training session's all about.
Okay, so let's see that.
We'll get into that through this APC or through the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. So I guess back to, have we adopted it?
No, so there's a motion on the table for the adoption of minutes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Okay. Next item is over to our planning consultant, Ken Cossey, he's got a PowerPoint. There are copies, yeah.
Here we go. Good morning to the old APC members and congratulations to the new APC members. So today, we're going to talk briefly about the Advisory Planning Commission, the purpose and the function. So today's topics of discussion, we're going to, we have to understand what a mandatory powers are of the council and the discretionary powers of the council. Because that's the role that the Advisory Planning Commission plays is in the discretionary powers of the council. We'll talk briefly about what is an Advisory Planning Commission? What is the authority of an Advisory Planning Commission? We'll look briefly at the concept of what this term development means and what it's all about. We'll look briefly at the new amenity community contributions. This has replaced the old CCC aspect under the new legislation for the housing. We'll look briefly at the meeting format. We'll look briefly at the meeting expectations. We'll look at some of the planning tools. We'll talk about the APC recommendations. We'll talk briefly about the outline of the process, which we were just going through at the beginning there, and then we'll have some questions. And anywhere along the ways, if you got any questions, feel free to stop, but there's also a question section at the tail end if you require it.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, I keep, you're looking that way, that's...
Yeah. We went too far. Miss it again. Maybe I should keep my glasses on. So basically, under the municipal government, governance powers, municipal governments have two types of powers. They have their mandatory power that they are required to do and it's spelled out in the legislation. And then the powers, this includes powers to regulate, prohibit, or impose requirements. Then you have your discretionary powers. It doesn't mean just because we have a rezoning application in place, council does not have to authorize that rezoning application. So that becomes a discretionary power because the council has the ability to choose to approve it or not to approve it, or to approve it with recommendations. So those are the two types of powers and the role that we function in, the APC, is in the discretionary powers. We make a recommendation to the council to say, yes, it's a good idea, or no, it's not, or we can support it with recommendations X, Y, and Z. So what is an Advisory Planning Commission? Some local governments in British Columbia utilize Advisory Planning Commission structure to assist in the decision-making process and planning and land use management. Some use it, some do not use it. So it's not a mandatory thing across the province. So the group of citizens like yourself, generally who are active in the community, will provide some non-binary comments. Because you've got to remember, you're making a recommendation to council only on a land use matter that has been referred to them by council. So you can't go out and decide to have a meeting on application X unless council referred it to you. So how is the APC created? Well, it's created through the Local Government Act, Section 461. A council may by bylaws, see the word "may", so that's why it's not mandatory across the province, establish an Advisory Planning Commission to advise council on all matters respecting land use, community planning, or proposed bylaws and permits that are referred to the commission by council. And we have the Villages APC Bylaw number 1006-202012, which understand a package. It was included in your package, which outlines the villagers' meeting procedures by law. And also in your package, I believe there was the zoning bylaw, the OCP. So what authority does the planning commissions really have? Based upon the legislation, there's no authority delegated by council. But your input is very, very important and it is strongly encouraged. Because we have to remember that unfortunately, based on the legislation, all land use decisions rest with council. So the role of the Advisory Planning Commission is to provide input on matters related to the land use planning and management at the local government level. The input is given as advice and does not form policy or set direction for the village. So this term development, what is it? Well, it's a two-sided concept. It helps to expand your tax base on one side, but creates additional requests for new programs and services on the other side. The overall benefits of development can be summarized into the categories of an increase in either the housing or commercial stock, an expanded property tax base, and an increase of potentially new jobs for the residents. But that's just some potential benefits. But there's also costs associated with that. And this can include, but not be limited to, the loss... My apologies. The cost can include, but not be limited to, the loss of your green space, congestion, and an increased demand for local services and infrastructure. Infrastructure that we can't afford at this particular part in time. Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, just one, Ken. Or maybe a weekly, and it's just sort of, when you go, like APC, like we have a mission, it goes to council, you know, for advisory. Where do you, does council now go to you or how does that?
Yes. I look after all of the planning applications from the technical perspective. I get the reports prepared and fed through the system and then into council. So I make sure that they're, when the recommendations come in, that they're on, they're following the planning law and they're following the legislation requirements.
They didn't know, I know you're part of council, but being that you're the planning consultant, it didn't go, it came to you first or...
The applications, yes. They come in, they come in the desk, and then once we look at them, I look at it and we say, yes, it's a complete package or it's not a completed package. And if it's not a completed package, then we get it in front of council and say, we're missing information X, Y, and Z. Then council has the authority to say yes or no to the application on the spot. Or they can say that we want to proceed, but we want information X, Y, and Z included in this.
Okay, but just to look at you, but the APC, well, they...
This is a...
...before the application is?
No. I look at the application and then...
And you decide whether it comes to us?
No. I look at the application to make sure that it meets the development procedures requirements under the bylaw, that all of the boxes can be ticked off, that your application's got X, Y, and Z in it. And if they don't have X, Y, and Z, then I'm, based upon that development procedures bylaw, I am obligated to take it to council and say, we have to deem this application as incomplete because they have not done or provided information X, Y, and Z. And we just had one of those for 880, Hoxton Road.
Tower.
For me?
That tower. They wanted to build...
Apartments, they wanted to build an 880. And we've sent it back to them saying that the application is incomplete. We need to see all of these reports, this information before we can take it to the APC or even start the processing of it. So this is...
Then I won't answer the question until that comes up.
Okay.
So...
Ken?
Yes?
In the last couple of years or three years or whatever, has council referred anything to the APC when you haven't recommended it? Or have you...
No. No. The way it operates, when we're doing the referrals, I can put in any, anything and say, you can refer to X, Y, and Z. But the council decides who they refer it to.
But the council doesn't need your recommendation to do that?
No.
And I'm just asking, have they ever done that or have they only referred to us what you've recommended they refer?
It's... I... After we go back in the minutes, just thinking back on it, no, they haven't referred it to the APC unless it's in the reports.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So development, when you're, we're going back to development. When you're within the concept of facing increased development pressures, the village is now challenged with responding to new demands to provide more services and programs for its residents. So basically, we've got the tax base, the property tax base, some occasional grants. And the development cost charges at the time were very, very specific. You could not use it like the amenity cost charge concept. The development cost charges with the roads, with sewer and water, that sort of stuff. Creation of parks, services for the parks. However, with Bill 46, now allows for the funding of other types of community amenities, such as fire protection facilities, police facilities, solid waste facilities. You can do that through what is referred to as a DCC process, although it's actually called the amenity community cost process. But you have to set it up somewhere to your DCC process. And the DCC process and the ACC process will be done at either the building permit stage or at the subdivision stage.
The ACC, that's either at the building permit or the development stage or...
Building permit stage or at the subdivision stage.
And how is that determined which or stage?
When the proven officer can look at it and say that we can defer this, it's a technical opinion of the proven officer, that this type of activity can be, is done best at that stage.
I'm thinking, for example, the one that was on the recent agenda here, the end of Echo Avenue, 410 Echo Avenue. If that gets approved, that goes through 410 Echo?
Yeah.
Right? And they want to make four lots there?
Hmm.
Right? And so these get, assess them either when the subdivision happens or then when they're sold and the individual properties get built?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, sometimes you need to do that at the subdivision stage, but depending upon circumstances, you've got that last resort. The building permit stage is your last resort to collect all these fees and to implement all of the requirements. Okay, so the question now becomes, how does a growing municipality such as Harris and Osprey's finance, build, and maintain the current amenities and any future requests? Well, as I said earlier, you can either do this through grants, property taxes, or grants from senior levels of government. But now, as I said, with the Bill 46, which came through the housing, the amenity contributions concept is in play now. So you can do all sorts of good things with that amenity contribution. That replaces the old community contribution concept, which was technically illegal, but is operating in the gray area because the ministry themselves admitted that there was no legislation for the community cost charges, but they came out with a guideline. But there was no legislation to support that guideline. So what is an amenity cost charge? Basically, this is what you can afford. But this is what you need. So how do you go from the older one to the newer one? Well, that's done through your amenity cost charges contributions now. So as I said, this is a new section in the Local Government Act. It's under Section 570.1, and it was brought about because of Bill 46. The only thing I like about the housing legislation is that this came into play. Oh, by the way, the housing legislation has hit a huge stumbling block at the provincial level. The, if there's a covenant in place, talks about density, that covenant reigns supreme. So if there's a building scheme also associated with it, that building scheme says there's one house, there's only one house allowed on the property, regardless of what the provincial legislation says or the municipal bylaws.
That's a major fly in the ointment.
Oh, they were told this right from the beginning, but they just, they knew that and they chose to ignore it.
So the covenant is placed, where does the covenant come into it?
Well, the covenants get placed on it, they can be placed on it at the subdivision stage, or they can be placed on it at the building permit stage.
Yeah, and the covenant is always negative, is that right? You cannot do this, you cannot...
No, not necessarily. You can talk about density, you can have in there, it could be one building per lot, that sort of stuff.
Okay, so that would have been put on way, way back.
Could have been. Could have been.
Whether it's negative or not, it's my opinion.
Yeah, I just remember when I...
The negative ones, like you, like people that are not North American, if this was in covenants that I have come across, they were not allowed to buy in this subdivision.
Oh.
Yeah, those are, those are not valid. I don't know why they're still on, in all honesty.
Do we have any anomalies with covenants? Were there covenants that got here and there or something?
Oh, I can't speak to that. There's so many, it stands on a case-by-case when you pull up the property. You look at the title, it'll tell you that it's affected by a... So what the legality of, as I said earlier, it's now law, Section 570.1 of the Local Government Act. Amenities are defined as facilities or features that provide for the following benefits to the village. It can be a social benefit, it can be a cultural benefit, it can be a heritage benefit, it can be a recreational benefit... It can be a social benefit, it can be a cultural benefit, it can be a heritage benefit, it can be a recreational benefit. It can be an environmental benefit, but it's collected, as I said earlier, at the subdivision or at the building permit stage. I'm just letting you know that there's. These tools that are out there that are applicable. There's something that can help this along the way, and this is now with the recent adoption of the official community plan. We now have, we now can talk about a development approval information bylaw. And that we'll talk about a little bit later in in this uh presentation. So as as you can see, the general meeting of the advisory commissions are open to the public. It can only be held in community facilities, you can't, at one time, people used to try to run off and have them in their kitchen table. In their community, that's that cannot happen anymore. The legislation now requires you to have it in an open meeting and to have it in a uh community facility. And what we're looking at is you're considering amendment to an official community plan, zoning bylaw. And. The applicant is entitled to attend to the meeting and they're entitled to be heard. And when you have a meeting with the developer, you can ask him or her any questions that you see fit. Associated with the land use side of things. So meeting expectations, there's some situations where you'll encounter your peer pressure. APC members often do not want to offend their colleagues or they appear to be unconventional or uncooperative, it's human nature. Commission members have been appointed to represent a variety of views, and there's no reason why discussions should always be unanimous. You can still be opposed to it. That's your choice, but don't feel that you have to follow what your peers are saying or recommending to you by any stretch of the imagination. You can say, I disagree and give your reasons why, nothing wrong with that at all. Then there's expectations from the public. A lot of the APCs have problems making decisions in front of the public. At one time, what they used to do. The APCs would listen to what the pup or what to what the developer would have to say. Then they tuttle off into a corner or a different section of the facility and have their discussion about what they're going to do. Then come back and announce it, you can't do that anymore. You have to make the decisions, your recommendations in front of the public. You can't go off into the corner and do that anymore. And there's often, you'll you'll hear words from the developers saying that I need to have this number of lots, or else I'm not gonna make a profit. I'm gonna need to do this, this, and this, because that's the way I've always done business, doesn't matter. Or this is gonna be the greenest development package you've ever seen, if I had a dime for every time I heard that, I wouldn't be sitting here today. But there's all of these words that will come out from the developers in meetings, discussions or making a presentation. Just take it all with a grain of salt.
Turn me a battery in there.
Oh, here we go, maybe I gotta push harder. Then there's the developer in the business perspective. They'll represent a particular point of view aimed at their profitability, that's the big thing they're looking at. And as I said earlier, all the statements must be carefully evaluated. Comments such as we must have this many lots, eh, doesn't mean anything. There's got to be a reason for why do you need, but we can't get into their pro forma. We cannot look at their business plan. Cause we're not in that type of business, council's not in that type of business, everybody has the right to go bankrupt.
Basically, we need to look at what's best for the village.
Yeah, yeah, how you feel about it, how you feel about it. And if their your peers are agreed, then that's great, if not, that's fine too. Even if the developer were to share their business pro forma, the community does not have to accept, does not have to accept inappropriate development. And this is part of the data collection process which you are in and. The commission needs to review each proposal based upon its individual merits. And we'll talk about how do we look at it from that perspective in a bit. So what is the function of staff in this situation? We answer technical questions. APC APC members should cast their votes that in their judgment rules good planning. That's fine, we will make sure that it is legal and abides by all of the legislation that is applicable. We'll let you know if yes, you can do that or no, you can't do that. When you go through all of it, we answer any technical questions that you may have on the application. So as you saw earlier, this is the general meeting format for your advisory planning commissions. So this will be handed out on a regular basis or when you're at your APC meetings. So what is land use planning, what are some of the tools that you have available? Well, the tools that you have available is you have your official community plan where you have broad designations. What a lot of people have a problem with is they'll see that it says residential here. And they just view that as it's a residential zone, but it's not, it's been designated residential. Inside of your your zoning bylaw, which implements your official community plan. You'll have your R one zones, your R two zones, your R three zones. Just because it says uh residential doesn't mean that the R one requirements are applicable to the whole area. And a lot of people get those two things confused on a regular basis. Zoning, as I just said earlier, zoning bylaw, there's site specific depth or regulations. As I said, you could have this area designated through your OCP as residential. Through your zoning bylaw, you got one area R one, one area R two, one area R three, one area R four. That's where your land use regulations come into effect, it's through your zoning bylaw. And that includes your building height, your lot sizes, which is addressed at the subdivision stage. Your setbacks, all of those sorts of things, the proposed uses for each of the zones, that's all inside of your zoning bylaw. You have permits that are available, your TUP means temporary use permit. I've been here for eight years. Eight years now, I think, only small. I've done, we've done one temporary use permit. And that was for the parking lot over here. What a temporary use permit does is is required to set up. You can, regardless of what it says in the zoning bylaw. You have to, you can set up or issue a temporary use or a council can issue a temporary use permit for up to three years. With a renewal of a gain of up to another three years. At the end of those, that's if it's going to go to six years, they are required to return it back to its natural state the way it was. And at when the issue and so the permit comes in, that that's the type of monetary. Finances that the council will hold until you're done with your temporary use permit. You have to be really, really careful with temporary use permits, cause they have a way of going from temporary to permanent. Number of years back when I was doing some work up in the Peace River Regional District, just outside of Chetlin. The board, the regional district board decided that they were going to issue a temporary use permit to a gentleman to set up a campground. Just outside, just down from Chetlin, and when I went back. Oh, after I left, I went, I think it was about ten years, fifteen years. And that campground was still there. And it was still being treated as a temporary use permit.
So you can't put a time limit on a temporary?
Yes, yes, you do, they're supposed to be for up to three years. And that then that happens, what it's just, they didn't have the political will to tell the gentleman or the owners to change it to a rezoning. Cause a lot of people, what they'll do with temporary use permit. Is they'll say, well, we want to try something like a a small. Shop business, home occupation, but they want to go through the rezoning and just want to see how it's gonna work out, so you can use it as an economic development tool. And then if it works out well, then you gotta either rezon or move to some other area.
So they can't renew it?
They can renew it once for up to three years. But again, it comes back to the ones in the Peace River Regional District, the council just ignored it.
Can after, can those three years, they instead of referring back to its natural state? Can they then say, okay, we're gonna rezon this, let me deal with it?
Yeah, they can do that, and that that's another process, doesn't mean they're gonna get it. Subdivisions, the AO is the approving officer, and that's appointed by the village. And that your approving officer is the gentleman sitting at the back. He looks after all of the types of subdivisions. The only types of subdivisions that this gentleman does not look after is when you're doing a building conversion. So you got an exist like you got a hotel that's right now. And you want to convert it into a condo and privately sell each of the units. And building conversion process is handled by council.
I recognize the pace, but I don't remember his name here. Thank you.
Okay, I have the ACC and the DCCs. As I mentioned earlier, they're addressed at either the subdivision stage or the building permit stage, yes.
Well, I got some, a couple of general questions based on this, but finish.
Okay, yeah. So the planning tools available under the permit side, you have what is the temporary use permit? You have a development variance permit, DDP, and a DP, development permit. Development variance permit is only used that if I come in and say that, well, that that setback is not working for me. So I need to, if you can relax it for me, but there's a pros, I can't just say I need it. You have to explain why you need it. And then council has to say yes or no. And then once it's done, then that regulation has been relaxed. Cause that is that regulation is a relaxation of that regulation is is uh charged on title. Put onto the title, so it's always there, so everybody knows as you're going down them. Development variance permit, you cannot uh use it for density. Or to change the land use. So if I'm coming in and I'm saying that I'm, I need to have a floor or a lot coverage changing it from sixty percent. To seventy five percent, that's a change in the density, so you have to do a rezoning application. So some of the bylaws that are in play are the official community plan, the zoning bylaw, the development cost charges bylaw. The subdivision servicing bylaw. The sign bylaw, the business licensing bylaw, and the development procedures bylaw. Some of the policies that we we have in place right now, the community amenity contribution, which is no longer valid. We have panhandle locks. A policy on that, other arrangements in play. The building inspection services is a function, uh it's a regional function of the Fraser Valley Regional District. They look after all of the building inspections. When we receive a referral from Fraser Valley Regional District, it's a called referred to as a planning referral. We look at it, I look at it and say that yes, it meets all of the zoning requirements and it meets the use. And then we send all that comment and all of the covenants to the building inspector and they. Look after those issues. We have no say in the if the building goes up. Cause normally, if it's a contravention of some sort of permit, they have to come back to council and ask. The registered, section one fifty, oh, I forget the the section, but there's a section where they can register against it. Notice against the title. So the planning tools, and as I mentioned earlier, we have various types of permits. And they're created through section four eighty one, four ninety one is the development permits. Four ninety two to four ninety seven are the temporary use permits. What we have to do with the temporary use permit is we have to designate an area. In either the OCP or the zoning bylaw that says we're gonna allow the council to say to, or I'm sorry, not allow. But if somebody comes through and says that we're going to, we'd like to do a temporary use. That has been designated in the temporary use permit area, and it is in the zoning bylaw for um. Commercial and residential purposes only, no industrial purposes. So they have to meet those requirements on a section of the zoning bylaw. And then there's the development variance permit. So as I mentioned earlier, the temporary use permit is commercial or industrial, three years with one extension for up to three years. Development variant, that doesn't mean that we have the industrial inside the zoning bylaw, it just, this is the legislation. Development variance permit relaxes any zoning or subdivision bylaw or any other land use regulation, except for the use of density like. What we were talking about earlier. Development permit, additional information is required to look at either the forming character, hazardous situations. Environmental revitalizations of of commercial areas for conservation purposes. The word student doesn't work. So what do we mean development permit? So type of permit that's looking to do any of the following. Not, and it's not listed in any general uh order. You're looking at trying to protect whatever from the natural hazards, addressing or establishing forming character. Helps to promote an official community plan goal, your energy conservation as an example, your greenhouse gases. So the types of development permit that are in the legislation, there's now a little that one, the bottom one at the. Uh section K, the tenant protection, redevelopment of a housing site. That's based upon the new housing legislation that's in play, but all the rest of them are have been in there for a number of years. So you can see that there's words like protection used numerous times, revitalization, establishment of. So there's specific information that is required. So how do we define a development permit? Development permit is a tool that is looking for additional information that must be provided before. The uh development can take place. So out of the eleven items allowed in the Local Government Act, the LGA, the village currently uses four types of development permits. It's their lake shore commercial and multifamily, where we're looking at forming character. The hazardous land and wildfire issue. Repairing areas, looking at environmental issues. And it also addresses the repairing area protection regulations as identified by the province. And greenhouse gas emission. The development permit requirements are laid out in the village's official community plan. Turning now to a temporary use permit, they can be used to allow temporary commercial or industrial lands to to take place. Even though the zoning bylaw land use regulations does not allow them. But as I mentioned earlier, it's it for the village. But as I mentioned earlier, it's it, for the village, we only have the the commercial side of things. It has to be designated in your OCP or your zoning bylaw. The requirements of the village are contained within sector five point two of the zoning bylaw. It can be issued for a term not to exceed three years, maybe renewed for an additional three year term. Not more than three years. Security may be required to ensure that the conditions and terms of the permit have been addressed. And if they don't, then the council has the ability to take that funding and. Uh use it to bring back whatever it is. Now, whenever we're taking security, one of the things that you never ever do is you never take. Uh a bond. Used to be you take bond, cash, or an irrevocable letter of credit. And I think it was about. Number of years back anyhow, the developer took, it was either Kelona or Kamloops. And they did, the developer declared bankruptcy. The receiver would took Kamloops or Kelona or one some municipality to court and said that that bond is now. Uh part of the uh. It's asking an asset for the receiver. And then it reverts back, the courts agreed with that. So the the municipality could not do because. They sat for years and years with like in Victoria, I don't know if you know Coldwood Corners, they sat for years, ten years. With a big hole in the ground with a little plastic fence around it saying, watch out, you might fall in here. But that was because of that court case. They lost all, they lost everything. So when you're dealing with developers now. The standard process is use irrevocable letters of credit or cash, cause it's right out of their system. It's preferred to use irrevocable letter of credit.
Irrevocable letter of credit, wouldn't that fall under like the development bankrupt?
No, cause it's it's uh guaranteed by the bank.
Okay.
For your development variance permits, you can vary any of the following bylaw regulations. This is not applicable to the zoning bylaw. You can, as I mentioned earlier, you can look at it from your subdivision servicing perspective. You can look at it from a farm business perspective. You can look at it if you got a manufacturing home and campgrounds. You can look at it from a runoff perspective. You can look at it for off-street parking and loading, signs and screenings. What you cannot vary though is the user density as specified, the new residential tenure zone. As as specified in the new residential tenure zone or any local land floodplain requirement. So what is a zoning bylaw? This is a land use tool that are used to implement the OCP policies and objectives as it relates to the orderly development of the village. As I mentioned earlier, the OCP can designate certain areas for a type of potential land use. The zoning bylaw implements those requirements. Everybody gets all excited about the OCP for reasons that are still unknown to me. I'm not just talking here, I'm talking in my. Uh thirty-nine year, thirty-eight years of doing this. Everybody gets excited about the OCP. But at the zoning bylaw, which implements the OCP. There's nobody or very few people come out to the zoning bylaw. That's where the kicker is. Because that implements the requirements of the OCP. The OCP is deemed by the courts to be a policy document. The zoning bylaw is deemed by the courts to be a regulatory document. At this, at the OCP level, the courts don't generally get involved in a decision of this. Nature. There's some, there's some slow movement in that direction. There's an approving officer projected it. Projected an application based upon the OCP a number of years back. And the courts agreed with them, but that's the only thing that I'm aware from a planning law perspective. Usually the courts treat an OCP as a policy document and a zoning bylaw as the regulations. So speaking in very general terms, the various land use categories are associated with each zoning or. Zoning bylaw, they have residential requirements, commercial requirements, community requirements, or any combination thereof. And our zoning bylaw is bylaw number one, 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 five, two thousand and seventeen. And it's created under the authority of the Local Government Act, sections four seventy-nine. As a problem allows for the creation of a zoning bylaw, it's a legal document that outlines various land use regulations. And this comes into the discretionary powers that we were talking about earlier. Just because there's a rezoning application in front of council, doesn't mean that council's obligated to change it or mandated to change it. That it becomes a discretionary use or discretionary power of the council. And this is where the ABC plays its role, it just offers information and input into that, whether or not council should rezon it or not. So here's some of the requirements under a zoning bylaw, what are the permitted and accessory uses? What is the site coverage? What is the building height? What is the Florida area ratio? The Florida area ratio, by the way, only deals with where people live, where people. Are part of, always are not considered that. So when you're looking, and we're only looking at four area ratios for commercial operations. Would a elevator shaft is not, parking lots are not included, restaurants are not included.
And something like a, a manage room in a, a. A proper building, would that be included if you are?
No, not normally. We look at regulations for home occupations. We look at accessory use requirements. We look at the temporary building regulations. We look at off-street parking requirements and off-street loading requirements. These are some of the issues that are addressed in in the zoning bylaw. So the next tool that we have is called the development procedures. Bylaw or development procedures. If you re, you need require. If you have an OCP and a zoning bylaw in place, you were required by the legislation to have a development procedures bylaw in place. We have bylaw one, zero, nine, zero, two thousand and sixteen. What does this do? Well, this tells me or tells the public how the application is processed. When it is go to council. What's the process to use? What type of information is required before it can move forward? Can council say that or can, after it's been rejected? Can, can I, when I go back to council, say I want you to reconsider this for reasons X, Y, and Z? Is that applicable in the development procedures bylaw? And it also talks in there about it, the development procedures bylaw that we have for the village. Covers those issues, plus it also covers off on the building conversion. Because the approving officer does not deal with the building conversion subdivision. And whenever we're dealing with any of the bylaws, the bylaws are based upon the concept of natural justice and fair play. That means we treat everybody the same and everybody gets a chance, whether you're for it or against it, to have a discussion about it. So now, because we've adopted a new official community plan and due to changes in the local government act. The following new tools have been added to the toolbox. The development approval information, it's a section of the local government act, DAI. Why, I always say this, I don't understand why they call it development approval information. Cause all it technically is is just an impact analysis on certain activities that could happen. But it's information that is good information because it helps the community decide whether or not it's a good application or not. Brought in the wildfire interface and greenhouse gas production DP area. And now because of the changes to the act, we have to bring in the amenity cost charges. And that's on the work list. So DAI. What does it mean? Oh, it just basically means impact analysis. It's under section four eighty-four of the Local Government Act. It just means information on the anticipated impact of a proposed activity or development. And you can see the five categories down there. How's it gonna impact the transportation patterns, including the traffic flows? How's it gonna impact the sewer and water? Many, many times we've been hearing that it's impacting the sewer and water. Up to this point, council can ask for it, but we're kind of in the gray area. This. Puts us in solidly into the legal side of saying, we want you to do X, Y, and Z now. What are the public facilities that need to be looked at? How's it gonna impact schools? How's it gonna impact parks? How's it gonna impact any community services that are provided? How's it gonna impact the natural environment? These are tools that can assist the advisory planning commission because you can make a recommendation that council do any one of these tools. And it's a two-step process. You have to designate your DAI requirements inside of. Or your DAI area inside of your official community plan, and that's been done. The second step is what do we want when we do a DAI bylaw? What do we want when we say that the engineers that are look at X, Y, and Z? This is coming up for council's review on the ninth of September, the actual this bylaw. It's been a long time coming. This is, this legislation has been around since nineteen ninety-nine and we just recently brought it in. With the adoption of the official community plan. So what is the APC? What can you make the recommendations on? Just because you have an application in front of you, doesn't mean that you have to support it. But you can make a recommendation to support the application with no conditions. You can make a recommendation to reject a land use planning application, but you can't reject it just because I don't like it. Means nothing. What are the land use requirements of you saying I don't like it? You have to say that. It's like sending up a public hearing and say, I don't like it. Okay, what does that mean? You can't take any land use situation because the way it operates in the public area is a land use, when land use issues are addressed. And only land use issues, that goes back in front of council and as a part of the summary and say, well. Somebody brought this issue up, do you wanna do a study on it or do you want, you, you wanna consider it, yes or no? Then you move on. And this is what the APC does, is they provide information into that decision-making process. Uh you should look at X, Y, and Z, and it's up to council to say, we've heard from everybody and we do it or don't do it. That's their, their prerogative. So maybe there's additional information that is required under this category of being rejected. Or you can make a recommendation to support the land use application with any additional conditions that you see fit or require, like. It may have its merits, but you want, you you suggest that it's gotta do a sewer and water study. Or suggests it's gotta do an environmental assessment process or whatever. We've now got all of these tools to make a recommendation to council. So now looking to where, what is the function of the advisory planning mission and the whole process. This is the pro, the steps that we go through. We look at the application, it's been received, reviewed by staff, and report prepared. So basically. They can say, yeah, it's okay, it's got some merits, we've looked at it, excuse me, or. We've got some concerns, whatever it may be. We put it all in front of council and they say, yes, we can move it forward or no, we can reject it. And if they decide to move it forward, they can, we're moving into then what is called the data collection. And additional information. Council reviews that staff report. And they say they have the authority under the legislation to add any referral agencies they see fit on the list. Or if I put a list on there for them, they can take whomever off they want. The rest, it rests with council to decide. Then once we've collected the comments from the referrals. All of that goes into the, if there's a public hearing that's been authorized. The minutes from the APC meeting, the referrals from the various agencies all go into the public hearing package. So once the referral comments from public hearing has been held, all the information is collected. Because why would we wanna go to council with a series of one-offs when we're not making a decision on the final bylaw? So instead of doing that, we take all of the comments received through the referral agencies. Through the APC process, through the data collection process, and then we say, here's all of the information council. What do you want to do with it? And again, this is where the APC comes into play by making a recommendation to do whatever. So once we get this final report in front of council. They can accept it. Accept it with conditions or reject it. And anywhere through this process. Whenever there's a report put in front of council dealing with whatever application, they can refuse it on the spot. So even though your APC minutes are from December. Doesn't mean that it's been forgotten about, doesn't mean that it's not gonna be shared with council. It will be shared with council. When we get to the final report, look at it, the disinformation from the APC is part of the data collection process. That goes into the, because there's been no final decision made on the application until there's council says yes or no to it. But we need all of this information, as I said earlier, from the referral agencies, from the APC, from the public hearing. Because we have to summarize all of the information and say that this is a land use issue. And yes, it's a fair issue for council to deal with, or no, it's not. So thi- this is what I said earlier, when you get in front of doing a public hearing. I don't like it, doesn't mean anything unfortunately. It's cause it's not a popular vote. What you have to do when you're dealing with it is say, I don't like it because of. You cannot ask for the business. Information. If they wanna share it, that's fine, the developer, the business information. That's their own stuff and everybody has the right to go bankrupt. The council cannot address any uh. Business performance. That's not their job. If they've got the information that says that they can move forward, then they can move forward. And that's the other thing, when we have an application in front of us. Just because they're selling an application or selling the spot, the the area under question. Does not mean that we have to stop processing the application. Once we receive an application in, there's only two ways that we can stop processing it. Number one is council rejects it. The second way is, is if the developer or their agent comes in and says, we don't wanna do this anymore. If the developer doesn't say that, we are obligated to process it to the very end. So council makes your decision one way or the other. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, you say in the land use zoning planning process, which is the last one here, it says that, um, when you go to the public hearing, it may include the APC recommendations. So in this last case, we, at the APC meeting, made lots of recommendations um, and conditions on that building. Did that all go into the public hearing?
As far as I know, it did.
And in what form did it go in?
Yeah, it was some part of the public hearing package that was available online and in person.
Yeah, the way, the way it operates legally, we cannot hide anything.
No.
Because that means we're, we're, we're not giving you the proper information. So when we do the, the, the public hearing's package, you'll see that it's quite thick, but we got comments in there from all the agencies, and you just have to go through it and look at it.
Okay.
And that includes if there's uh, any reports that the developer has given also has to be in there.
Thank you. And the second thing I wanted to ask is if the council, the council accepts this report from all the different agencies. And if all, say, most of the agencies have problems and objections, does the council have to justify its position in giving to go ahead?
No.
Doesn't have to justify.
They can just say, we've heard it, we've considered it, and we're still going to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
If we make a recommendation, so for example, like a traffic flow study, uh, would that get done before council gets it, or is that just a recommendation from us? And afterwards, when council sees it, you could say?
Ye- yes, that, then, then that's what's going to happen with all of this additional information that's provided in here. That goes in front of council saying, this is what your APC has said. This is the information that the referral agencies have said. This is the information from the public hearing. Excuse me, what do you want to do with it? So it's not forgotten. It just unfortunately, because there's a, a gap between the data collection process and the final decision process. That's the issue, because there's a lot of speculation and misinformation going around.
Okay, I've got three categories of questions, and just following up on what Judy said and going back to our original discussion. On your slide number twenty-five, you don't have to go back to, uh, oh, no, say thirty-two rather. You don't have to go back to that, that's just telling what the APC recommendations may be. And so when you talk about make a recommendation to support, make a recommendation to reject, or make a recommendation to support with conditions kind of thing. That to me is asking that the APC should be making a report, not just to simply pass a recommend, a, a motion which becomes embodied in the minutes, which is a record of what we did. And this is, I've said the point before that there needs to be a report at the end of our meetings, which includes whatever variation of those three options that are there. And, uh, I'm not going to belabor the point because I think it's well understood what I'm getting at and I said consistently. But on the other points, and that was more of a comment than a question, because you've, you've outlined it, I'm just saying, you've outlined what we have to do, and I'm saying this is the best way we should do it. Now, under a zoning bylaw, I, the bylaw, I've been really puzzled by the process. If somebody puts up a proposal that requires a variance to the bylaw, whether it has to do with heights or setbacks or whatever, and you've said it can't be density and all that kind of thing, but I've been puzzled why it is that in order to affect this propos, this zoning amendment, we have to pass a new bylaw, which is an amendment to the original bylaw. And I've never understood it, if that new bylaw is there, then our original bylaw must contain somehow all these other little bylaw amendments inside it, or how it works, it's, I mean, it, it just seems to be, it's a very cumbersome approach to, uh, bringing in that. Is that standard procedure across all municipalities that have this kind of situation? The idea that if there's a variance to a zoning bylaw, that we have to pass a new, a new zoning bylaw that incorporates that change, is that standard across the province?
Yes.
Wow. Just.
The only way that you can do this is by a bylaw. Council has that, this, is you have to amend it, your bylaw by a bylaw.
Yeah, and I can speak to that if, if it's okay. Um, in terms of, excuse me, incorporating the amendments, there's consolidated versions of the bylaws, so um, you still have to refer to the original bylaws to make sure that everything is correct, but what I'll often do is consolidate bylaws for convenience, and it'll include any amendments made um, with the most recent version, so, but yes, we have to, you can only amend the bylaw with a bylaw.
There's a, one of my old clients, regional district, they created way back when they started off as a regional district sixty-seven, sixty-eight. They started with an interim zoning bylaw number twenty-one. And that interim zoning bylaw number twenty-one, the last time I looked, about five years ago, was still in effect.
Okay.
But it has been amended many, many times.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying, the consolidation must be getting.
But, yeah, and every now and then, what, what, what will happen is a municipality, you say, well, you've got, well, on the front of the, the bylaw, they'll say what your, how many amendments you've done, where it's been applicable, that sort of stuff. And if you get to so many, then they'll say, we're going to consolidate the bylaw. So this is why you'll see at the bottom of it, it's been consolidated, and you look inside at the bylaw, and it'll say this has been consolidated, or bylaw number, whatever, added this paragraph, or strike out this paragraph, that sort of stuff.
Okay, well, let me just, this is basically my last question about what happens in other places. Our zoning bylaws set, sets the numbers for setbacks and heights and all that, all those. Those figures, I mean, I've noticed some re, reruns where the new side setbacks can be as low as one point two meters and that sort of thing. Are most of those figures consistent with the standards that might exist in, uh, say, Agassi or Abbotsford or whatever, are those setbacks fairly standard across the plate? Or do we have a set that's in Harrison that's quite different from what a zoning bylaw might be in another place?
The zoning bylaw is set up to address your, the village's specific issues. And if we go through the, the process, and the community says, we think that one point five meters or one point two meter is too small, then we, we go and we find out what they would require. But at this point in time, the, the big thing with the zoning bylaw and the side setbacks is just make sure that there's a, a little bit of a fire break and that the emergency vehicles can get around. That's generally the only thing that will happen, that is consistent, there'll be some sort of gap between the two properties. So to answer your question, yes and no.
Yeah.
But nine times out of ten, the zoning regulations address Harrison's requirements only.
Okay. Now, I'm going to get off that zoning bylaw, thank goodness. For now, but ex, except for one thing, there's reference in here to form and character. Now, that begs a definition, of course. What do you mean by form and character? Somewhere along the way, and I don't have the specific reference of where this is or whatever, but it was stated, I believe, and this is just recall, so it may be right out of, maybe I'm completely wrong. But that the reference to design schemes was being reviewed, removed from the OCP, and there would be a separate new creation of design guidelines. Where are we in that program? First of all, am I correct that that's what happened, and then where are we in that process?
Yeah, the only thing is, it's not a design scheme, it's design policy. And that is, you are correct. The policy has been created, it's, it's gone through, what, second? Second draft review, and it'll be in front of council for the September meeting.
Okay, so we don't have that in there. Because how does one enact, because we've run into this on Screener, how does one react to someone that wants to vary from what is very obviously a design scheme for the neighborhood?
Two different situations here. The village is not involved in a building scheme or design scheme that's registered on title. We are only involved in the, the design policy aspect of it. So if it's registered as a building scheme, the courts have stipulated that the municipalities cannot impose the building scheme requirements.
The municipality can.
Cannot. Okay. You just gotta wait a minute.
Yeah, we just have to take a short break because we don't have quorum. I think he's.
Yes.
Sorry.
Two different things. Excuse me, I asked, will this be on Zoom?
We don't have any other members attending on Zoom. They were supposed to, but, um, I, I've asked our.
And they didn't try?
No, no.
Is it same roles in that conference forum?
Yeah, yeah, they were participating in transit, but I don't, I don't know if they had some technical issues. I've, I've been checking my emails to make sure, but, um, yeah, unfortunately, if they were on Zoom, for sure, it would be considered quorum, yeah.
Hey? Any other questions, Luna?
Well, I just, I guess I'm just a little confused to get away on this business of form and character to me is an integral part of the village. I, somehow or another, I think it's, we're beyond it, unfortunately. There's a very eclectic collection of form and character in our buildings and developments, and I don't know if we can ever back up and actually develop it, but if it were there, what was intended by form and character in what you talked about, and how did, how would Harrison bring that about if we could actually impose that?
That's, that is imposed through the development permit process. There's a section in the development permit that requires them to do their development based upon the requirements of the design policies.
Which aren't out here.
They, they were under, yeah. So under the old bylaw, all the applications that we received were prior to the new bylaw being adopted, so by law, they're assessed under the old bylaw for up to a year.
Okay, and I'm afraid in my mind, I still get, I'm, you're, you're not going to, I mean, well, over time, I will find out how I reconcile the, what we're allowed to do because that's Harrison's business, and what we can't have any power over because that's the regional dis, you know, the.
Yeah, somebody else.
Inspection process and that sort of thing and standards, but anyway, sort of to have occupied so much of your time, but I s.
Oh, yes. Do have those concerns, thank you.
I, I would like to follow up with what I, I was saying before, this business of our recommendations. I'm wondering whether we can have the minutes earlier, that's one thing, or can we at the end of the meeting just take, in this last case, there was just a proposal, a second of, just take that and say, this is a recommendation.
Okay, hot moment?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think the issue with, um, so for example, if we had a meeting and you make a recommendation, and then, um, we have a meeting just to adopt the minutes from that past one, where the recommendation was made, we get all that to council, there's still other things that are happening concurrently with the development while the APC is having time to look at it. Right, so if we give council, um, the recommendation, for example, in this case, it would have been, if we had a meeting in January, it could have been a January or February meeting. Um, the recommendation of the APC, that it will sit there, they will got, they will have gotten it in January or February, and then it, they won't think about it. There, it hasn't gone back before council, we've had a public hearing for that one, and it's not going to be going back before council. It could be months, right?
Yeah.
Depending on other things. So it's kind of like, um, it, it's just a bit, excuse me, piecemeal. And it, by the time the, the decision gets made, there's a, I mean, it would be included in that other port, report, like Ken's report, um, but it's not, it will have been received, could have been received months before.
No, I, 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 I hear all that, that's not what I was asking. What I was saying is, we don't see the minutes, we don't know whether the minutes clearly reflect what we said in all due respect. Um, and we don't know what Ken says in his report. And I think when last time, we said we wanted to be more in control, if you like, or not so much control, as able to be sure that that was exactly what we intended, or not intended, what we said, and what the, the report is that's going through. It's not a question of going to council, it's way, way before then. Does, I don't know, my mental self.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, mix that, mix that, yeah. Okay. It's up to council to decide if they want to have another meeting to review your information.
No, no, I don't, I don't want that.
No, no. To say that this is okay, or if the fact that there's a report put in front of them, that's again up to council. A summary of, well, how, how are you going to get it back? Is it, you guys can't see it or do, deal with it unless it's been referred to you by council?
No, it's not that, it's, it's a question of, we get the minutes, we've got the minutes now, months later, what if there was one of the, um, the things that would be moved, that had been left off? And you had done your report to the public hearing, but had not included that by an error. That we have, we need to be able to
Proofread?
Proofread of, do something so that we can be sure that what we said actually goes into Ken's report.
Not, not to men, not to mention that, uh, this being like nine months later, we may have forgotten some of the details.
Yeah, well, that's, that was another issue because we lost quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was a different issue.
Yeah, that, that wanted to be addressed earlier.
I just, I just feel that, in this case, I'm, I'm pleased with the minutes, they, they, they're absolutely satisfied. I just feel that, in this case, I'm, I'm pleased with the minutes, they, they, they absolutely satisfied me. But what if they didn't? At this point, we're, we're months down the road, and we're then saying, we don't need these minutes, that's a mess up.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to send a dra, I do my, the minutes very quickly after having the meeting, because I want to remember what was discussed, so I'm happy to send them to the chair, I think they should be looked at by the chair. Um, just, just on a draft form. Um, I have no problem doing that, and it, and, and we didn't have a chair for quite some time, so there, there is that mistake. Um, but yeah, and, and.
Hold on, chair giver from my wife. She just got a, she just got a hospital.
Yeah, so I think it'd be, there is a bit of a, a chance for you to have a look at them as the chair.
Sure.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yes, it does, but then it's usually our discussion between the chair and the committee.
Should.
Here, okay.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would satisfy that, thank you.
Would I be able to, as a chair, share those or, or discuss those with the other, other members?
Yeah, I mean, eh, the same with this, right, the, the meetings are recorded, um, we can go back and look at them, um. I, I want to make sure that the minutes are um, a reflection of what you say, and, and how you can help me with that, is with very clear resolutions, clear um, descriptions of what you're talking about.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll tell you about it, first and second, but what we're gonna do is give our comments to you, our comments, if, if we had any comments on the draft minutes, we will give them to Andy. And then Andy then will give.
Ideally, if there's something missing from the minutes, it goes before this committee, we talk about it, and, or commission, sorry, we talk about it in an open setting, and they're adopted as amended, or, or however.
Yeah.
Um, but as a first line of defense, I think for your chair to have a look at that makes sense. Yeah.
Sure, thank you.
On the matter
Nevermind, go ahead.
On the matter of process, this discussion still talks about, there's two functions here. What's the function of our minutes? And what's the function of the device that is used to get that recommendation to the council? So that's what I think, the minutes again, the minutes record what we actually did, that's our business. In fact, council can look at it, but it's not a vehicle to convey that in specific. So this boils down to the final question. Regarding that, I think that the report part of our minutes should be one of the last things we do, and that's the official recommendation from the group. That's what I hope to see. But I think that, that all of that needs to be worked out in new terms of reference, and can I ask if anybody's aware of how the process to develop a set of ter, or terms of reference for the APC? When and maybe how, I know that's an extra load on staff and everything else, but can you tell me how that might be approached?
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, we do have a motion from council to work with the APC, so that'll be another meeting, we would sit down, I would probably bring a draft forward after looking at it, I know we had one that existed in the past before, I think it was before the bylaw, um, before the new bylaw, so I don't know uh, how old it is, it will definitely need to be looked at. Um, but yeah, it would be another meeting and a discussion here.
Yes.
Is this a new one? New, new motion or new?
A new document.
New document?
Yeah, the terms of reference.
It's, it's an old document.
Yeah.
Twenty-twelve, I think. This is the APC bylaw?
They, yeah, the APC bylaw is.
It's, it's all, but we have, we have to, when you're dealing with it, you have to do it by bylaw.
The legislation requires, so whatever it is you want to change in the bylaw, we have to do an amendment to the bylaw, or rewrite the bylaw.
We could, yeah, we could um, also have just a, a less formal document that sets out the reporting, how that flow of information goes, so if it's, if.
Is it a policy then, retardant?
It would just be a terms of reference, not, uh, nothing to do with the by.
So it's not binding on anybody?
It wouldn't change the quorum, it wouldn't change anything that's set out in the bylaw, it would be more informed.
So point form, bold.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, a one, one or two page document, that's what we have for the other committees. Um, just a one or two page document that kind of sets out um, in a little bit more detail, but yeah, um, you know, whether that's a formal letter from the chair that gets included as part of Ken's report, like, those are some things we can discuss when we have that uh, terms of reference discussion.
Thank you.
Any other?
Um, I just for discussion? Next, next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting.
And I would like to, I'm not sure whatever else's timeline or schedules is, but uh, I'd like to go back to what we had previously. Um, first, first of all, evening meeting, and uh, first Wednesday of every month, that works for you, unless canceled.
The first?
Wednesday of every month. Um, unless there's not no business in the, it's canceled, we took it in the past.
In my case, well, I could be on and off, because my wife's on dialysis, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have to drive into Abbotsford, and the times are varying, like this week, she's gotta be there at five o'clock, four hours, so.
Okay.
So I don't know, I might be able to, and it might not be at one of the first ones, just depends, because of schedule changes, so.
Uh, first Wednesday of each month, meet us next week.
Watch, we don't have anything next week, right?
Yeah, um, if I could just, uh, suggest, just with the by-election timing, we're a little bit slammed in September. If we could, if we could look at the um, October second, as, I think we were having them at seven, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be the first
October second?
October second, yeah.
It doesn't make sense to have it.
Yeah, I think it's best to book it in, and it's easier to cancel a meeting than try to sit around.
Yep.
Yeah, for first time.
And I'll send out the calendar.
Yeah.
And does that work for you, your dialysis?
Well, it's just that we don't want to get it one week in advance, our times is a very strict, the uh.
With the day?
It's always Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Like, again, due to the change. Because there's so many people, I mean, like I said, it, the time, I might be having it morning one week, and it might be in the afternoon, it might be in the evening, so there's no consistency, so I'm just advising, I might not be able to make one on the Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, right?
Yeah, because I think under our, our, the arrangements, is if we miss two meetings running, we have to have a pretty good excuse.
I'd say that's a pretty good excuse.
I think that's a pretty good excuse.
Right, yeah, and just um, to that point as well, if you can respond and let me know whether you're coming as well, um, just keeping in mind quorum, like, for example, if someone could come today, we wouldn't have had quorum, so um, that will help me, and then we can work together to find a, a date that's more suitable, if, if we can achieve quorum that day. Yeah.
You know, the new members that are appointed to this group, did they, did you get on Zoom, or how?
Yeah, they, um, I, I'm not sure, but they were supposed to attend, I believe, so I, I'm not sure if they've had some technical difficulties, I haven't heard anything, so um, if we need to, if they have questions about today's presentation, they can talk to Ken or myself, and um, I'll let them, let them know, and I'll send them, uh, send them a copy of this as well, so.
One question for you, that's not part of this, sure, you're not, sure. I may be a possible recommendation.
Sure.
And a reason why.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for getting things together, and Ken, for putting the.
Yes, thank you, I feel more comfortable now.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad to be here. Oh, yeah. When I sat on the Capitol REAP, or Cowen Valley Regional District Board, I represented Channing and Lake for a number of years. And there was a question we had about a dam, the AM, and I couldn't, I was the chair of the engineering team, and I couldn't resist, after everybody was talking about it, and I s-